My name is Ken Davis. I am going to have the opportunity today to allow us to speak to someone who's running for school board and someone who's currently sitting on a school board. I will let them introduce themselves, but in their introduction, I'd like for them to include why, why they either are, have run and successfully managed to get on a school board and why they are running for a school board. But before we do that, I know that Ann pointed this out earlier, there are some people in the room that understand this, this, this job, this school board thing is volunteer. Last I checked, they don't get paid. And so, and so he goes, not yet. I wonder what he's going to be running on. He says, not yet. So if you are in the room right now and you are either currently on a school board or running for school board, meaning you are going to be giving of your time, would you please stand so that the people in the room can applaud you? I know there's, I know there's a few more in the building. And so we're going to, we're going to start with Aaron. Aaron is actually running for a school board, District 20. So if you live in District 20, Aaron Salt, by the way, please understand that we as the Culture Impact Team are not endorsing any candidate. Here, we will actually be having and hosting a school board forum here in October in which we will invite all of those who are actually running to come and get grilled by me. It's going to be a great time. You don't want to miss it. Those who've been grilled by me probably don't like me a whole lot afterwards, but, but they come to love me because I will embrace them and love on them after I've made them look bad. I'm just kidding. So Aaron, please go ahead and introduce yourself. Tell us why you're running for school board.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ken. My name's Aaron Salt. I'm running for District 20 School Board. I am a founding board member of five years for a District 20 Charter School. I've been the board chair there for three years. It's been a long road that included our inaugural year, that included COVID, and recently we just refinanced our building, $23 million refinance. So we're excited about that, saving a lot of, a lot of money. I'm running for school board in this year. I ran two years ago unsuccessfully. I'm running this year, hopefully successfully, because in the past two years, things have not gotten better. They've gotten worse. And I can't continue to sit here and watch what's going on to our students. I can only do so much at the Charter School where I serve. And there's other students in our community, there's other families in our community that need help, they need that support, and that's why I'm trying to get up there and to fight for them and to be that barrier between Denver and El Paso County. So my name's Aaron Salt, running for District 20. And I will say, Ken does a great job moderating that, that board forum. So it's not, it's not too bad. He did a great job. Thank you.
What he's saying is, you know, I didn't bring too much harm to his campaign when he ran two years ago. So Jason Jorgensen is currently on District 11 School Board. And again, I'll let him introduce himself and tell us a little bit about himself.
Yeah. Good evening, Jason Jorgensen, District 11 School Board Member. This is my, middle of my first term, so we serve a four-year term, so we're right here in the middle of that first term. And it was an interesting string of events that led me to go into the school board race and eventually winning on a fraction of the cost of most campaigns, and glory to God for that. I think it was just perfect divine timing. Believe that for sure. But left, left the education field in 2019 with the birth of our second child and transitioned into financial advising, which gave me the opportunity to not have a normal nine-to-five or in our case, seven-to-five teaching job, or later than that with coaching. But having the teaching experience to go, alright, I'm tired of yelling at my computer screen, I'm tired of, you know, banding with people on Facebook, and knowing that I eventually was probably going to get tied into some sort of political office run down the road. And this was like, okay, here's the opportunity, here's the bandwidth provided, and then God just kind of put me into it and we, we got elected. So in the first two, two years here, we've, we've done quite a few things. COVID has definitely delayed some of my initial first-term plans, but we're, we're serving strong and I'm eager to help get some change going here in the future.
Awesome. Okay, I need a favor. I want to make sure that, that we are very aware of what we're talking about here. So if someone could please run three copies of the report cards up to us, because we rushed up here. Of course, Jason came prepared, but the report cards, everyone was handed one when they came in? No, no, one cheater, report card. Thank you. As you can see, I am super organized and ready. Thank you. And so we've got the report cards up. I always find it interesting how the report cards are broken out. And feel free to go ahead and scroll those so that people can read them if they don't have a copy. If you do not have a copy, please get one. And so we'll, we'll begin with just kind of looking at the two districts represented here. If you don't know what ELA stands for, it is English Language Arts. Did I get that right? Thank you for the teachers who all told me I was right there. And so we'll, we'll start with District 11. And if you're wondering what those numbers on the left in the red represent, there are 183 school districts in the state of Colorado, and then they are ranked. And so that number says 100th out of 183, that is where that school district fell on this report card. So we'll, we'll begin with an active school board member. We'll give Jason the first crack at just looking at the report card for District 11. And tell me, Jason, as, as a city school board member, what can be done or what is being done to try and improve where District 11 falls on this report card?
Sure. Yeah, this, I saw this probably before anybody when it was first printed off in a certain individual's office, and I already knew this information. It, it's very infuriating. The nice thing is, this was data at the start of my term. So now I have my benchmark to go, to go on for the next four years. But this, if anybody's watched our D11 Board Meetings, it's something that I've brought up almost every board meeting. Where's the student achievement? Where's the academics? Where's the performance objectives? Where's the increase in proficiency of these skills? Where's the quality first instruction? It's like beating a dead horse as one of the only conservatives on the board along with one other individual. And it's, it's infuriating. What we are pitching to the public this fall, first off, I should probably do a disclaimer. I am here as a D11 School Board Member, but I am talking on behalf of myself. I am not talking on behalf of the Board of Education, so any of the views and opinions expressed by myself is my own personal opinions and beliefs. Done. Legality done. We are pitching a bond measure with an FMP-AMP, which is a Facilities Master Plan and an Academics Master Plan. It's a one-two pitch to reimagine, rediscover, re, rebuild D11. We're the oldest school district in the city. We are 149 years old, so we do have some crumbling infrastructure. Most, the average age of our building is over 60 years old, and so we've got some problems to fix. Now, we should have been managing that through all the past 149 years. So, you know, the past is past, the future is now and here in front of us, and here we have a bond measure for you this fall. What we're looking to do is strategically spend money in updating facilities, rebuilding schools, updating HVAC and infrastructure, things like that, in the efforts of cultivating the environment for us to have a strong academic master plan that's going to be put in place. So in other words, we have to have the cart before the horse, in my opinion, and say, well, we have to have everything perfect. We have to have the conditions present for us to have strong academic potential. And I've called farce from the very beginning, been yelled at by a few other board members, including our board president, about, you know, you can't go off saying that. And it's like, we have lost touch in the priority of quality education being our first standard. We teach all these other things, as Sloane had mentioned earlier, we're, we're teaching a restorative justice, all these extracurricular activities, and we've lost sight in just saying, where is the quality first instruction? Where's the professional development around it? Where is the reinforcing of that? Where's the strong building leadership that's in, that's taking care of cultivating that culture within each building and doing the necessary paperwork to chart who's doing well, coaching who's not, and then dismissing who's refusing to improve? And we're not doing it. So we're trying, long story short, we're trying with this bond measure, that's what we're being, we're talking about this fall on the ballot. So it's, it's not going to raise your taxes, but it does keep the current bond schedule in place, but it does go to a definitive plan that's going to hopefully improve our facilities over the next three to five years so that we have the conditions present to increase academic performance.
Awesome. A plan.
A plan. We have a plan.
All right. Go ahead, Aaron. District 20. One of the things that, that I would like to have us discuss is, in particular in District 20, is the gap. Right? So we've, we've got a gap, in particular, when I look at math. I'm a numbers guy. Math is very important to me. I think it is, it is vital to the development and the ability to function at your, at your best in society later in life. You will use math, no matter what it is you do in life. So what are your thoughts as far as District 20, things that can be done to help minimize, if not eliminate, the gap when we, when we look at the ethnic breakdown?
That's a great call out, Ken. And one of the things that really bothers me when I look at this report card, the first time that I saw it, I, I laughed a little out of just disbelief because a lot of people think D20 is this, this shining star, this badge of honor, and then you look at this and you look at ELA, we're failing 40% of students. In math, we're failing 50% of students. And if that puts us in the upper echelon of Colorado education, that says a lot more about Colorado, Colorado education than it does District 20. So when you start looking at the things that the state legislature is doing, the things that they're pushing down, the social programs and agendas, those are pulling dollars out of the classroom, and they're distracting our teachers, and they're distracting our students. So doesn't necessarily address the gap specifically, but eliminating a lot of these social programs would help put more dollars into classrooms, which will help all students.
Give me, give me an idea, Aaron, if you don't mind, when you say the social programs. Can you point to one, one or two in particular?
So I'll tell you a, a very recent example, that's a personal example to me, was recently the district went through a diversity, equity, and inclusivity initiative. There was a letter that came to the district signed by nearly 300 community members that said there was systemic racism. And so I, I say this is personal because I actually, when I saw that, I signed up to be on the task force to help select the committee that would do the DEI audit. I figured a voice of reason would try to help find the, the least invasive path forward. And by doing so, we chose a group that was only about, I'm, I'm trying to remember, I think it was around $65,000 that was spent to do that audit. Many of the other groups that had put in bids were quarter of a million or more. And so trying to find, again, the least amount of dollars going to these types of social programs, and, you know, it's a racist initiative to try to find where this is going. And so that, that's just one example that I can point to. That's really recent, that came in last fall, they put forward a bunch of recommendations to the, to the board and to the superintendent earlier this year, trying to wrap up their task force.
Okay. As many have probably heard, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of jump ahead here. As many have probably heard, through COVID, we saw a lot of children battle mental concerns, right? Mental health issues, I hate to use that, that term, but we're going to call it what it was. And so suicide, suicides in school districts in particular, and we're going to start with you, Aaron, because particularly in District 20, which I believe has the highest teen suicide rate in the state.
In some years, it's been the highest in the country.
Okay. And so again, we did see, and I, I read a report just the other day about how there actually may not have necessarily been a spike while children were kind of secluded. It actually rose again once they came back to school. Now, I was not the bully in school, nor was I the bullied. You know, six foot one, 200 becomes a little difficult to bully, you know? But I, I believe there is, there are things that occur once they're in school where there's these, these factions, right? Because everyone's broken out into, into these groups, and there are those that are, are picked on or talked down to, and, and maybe that is the reason, as I read this report the other day. But in particular during COVID, I believe the numbers did spike. And so let's talk a little bit about District 20, maybe some things that, that you may have been privy to, things they're, they're trying to introduce to, to try and curb some of the, the high, the, the high impact of suicides in that district in particular.
Yeah, it, it's, it's not a fun topic to talk about, but it's something that's a very important topic to talk about. When COVID came, people lost a lot of their social support structures because they were locked inside their homes. And when you look at some of these families that are in the, the D20 area, they have, you know, double income families, which isn't a bad thing, but that puts a lot of parents that don't have a lot of attention towards students, and so they're left to their own devices. And then when they, they need help, their parents are both working, which we have double income family in my house, so I, I get it. But it's the intentionality of making sure that we're, we're preparing our kids and giving them coping mechanisms, allowing them the support that they need, both inside the home and outside of the home. As far as the district goes, there are initiatives, I know earlier today, there was a, previously they were talking about Castle. Castle is one of the top accredited SEL curriculum providers or certification bodies of SEL curriculum in the nation. And so many organizations or districts and charters, et cetera, when they're implementing SEL curriculum, it is Castle stuff. It's Castle certified. And so that gives it this extra edge of credibility to the school boards. And so these are the types of programs that are coming in because what they, what districts do is they look and say, these students don't have the coping skills they need, they don't have the support structures they need. And so it's our responsibility as the school to provide that. That's not the role of the school. The role of the school is to educate the child. And so the school is coming in and filling in for areas where there may be absent parents and those types of things. And so when you talk about what's actually going on in the school, that's, those are the programs that we're trying to get. That's why we see a lot of these social programs come down from Denver, is because they are trying to find ways to, I mean, I'll just call it what it is, right? They're trying to make the government be there for the students when the parents are not. And they're trying to allow the students to rely on the government for their needs. I'll wrap up in just a second, but there was actually a bill that was passed, or not passed, well, it passed, but it was put on hold with COVID. A couple sessions ago, that was a pilot program for 10 different schools inside of Colorado. And what they were doing was putting a social worker or a school psychologist for every grade level within the school. Now, I don't know about you, if you know all of this, but a typical school social worker is around $50,000 to $60,000 salary. So if we have one school counselor in our school right now, and we're, this program was implemented K through six, so now we need to add at least five more, that's at least $300,000 burden put on the schools to support this bill that the state's putting down. It was an unfunded mandate, shocker. And, and what I found excessively repulsive about this particular piece of legislation was, do you know what one of the requirements were for the success of this pilot program? Unemployment rates of the parents. And so again, the government is trying to step in, they're trying to provide for these families, they're trying to provide for these students in ways that the parents and the families are not able to on their own, so that these students are relying fully on their, on the government and no longer on the core family. That's what we have to fight for.
All right. The government doesn't create anything. I'm just letting you know. And everything that they attempt to create is usually going to go awry. So, so if you hear them say, we're going to create program X, Y, or Z, you probably should start gathering at your state capitals and contesting it. I did want to point out that they are making it, making a point of making sure you see their socks. They have very nice socks on today. Very nice socks. All right, Jason. So I, I think there's a lot of question around what is the authority, what can the school board do or cannot do? And as now a, a city member of, of a school board, you probably get pushed on about things you can do, things you, that people think are within your authority and things that actually aren't.
Things you should say in your personal Facebook that think gets public attention?
That's correct. So, so if you don't mind, I, I mean, just kind of a, an overview, because I, I think there's, there's, people believe there's this all-power for, over schools within the school board, and maybe there is. Maybe you're going to tell me that's true, or maybe just with you. You have all-power. And, but, but give us an idea, just kind of, what are some things that, that people think the school board can, can accomplish or has the authority to do that they can't? And what are some things they can do?
Excellent. Yeah, that is a great question. So we, we do three things as a school board, and, and a board is, and depending on the size of the district, we're a seven-member board, D20 is a five-member board, D49, five member as well. So we, as a board, have three jobs. And first off, before I go over those three, we're going to talk about who we work for. Us as a school board works for the taxpayer. That is who we work for. So when you come to us in public comment or via email, we are going to listen to you. You'll get a generic response sometimes from the board secretary, depending on how many emails are coming in for a week, but we, we listen to those, we read them, I'm, I'm diligent to read them, and if secretary doesn't comment, I'll, I'll comment or reach out. So we work for you. Then the superintendent works for us. He is our one employee. So we manage him as a board. Now, I've gotten in trouble in the past by offering advice or what was construed as maybe a directive to our superintendent in the name of trying to help our district. So I had to be very careful on how I, as an individual board member, or any other board member, would serve amongst the group of, of the board. So we look at a board majority to do anything, and that board majority is going to, in a seven-member board, be a four-three. And so when you've got, you know, two or three conservatives on a board, it's hard to, to get things done that, that we want to accomplish. But we do three things. We hire and fire our superintendent and, and manage him as our one employee. We review and approve curriculum. And then we review and make or delete policy. Those are the three things we do. So when, when a board come, when you, well, why can't you just do this? Why can't you just take care of that? Well, ma'am, sir, for me to be able to review that policy, to bring it to the board, I would first off need four of the seven to approve, me even taking that up to review it, which, guess what? If it's a conservative policy or one that we feel adamant about, but the rest of the board doesn't, we're not even going to get it to the dais to be able to review it, to get a work session on it. And so we're dead in the water right there, which is very frustrating when you're the person that is in the minority wanting to move forward on, let's review mask mandates, let's review what policy is on, on health and, and, you know, things like that. And I get no traction. And then if I dig deeper, I get stuck in the weeds. And I'm told that you're getting stuck in the weeds, Director Jorgensen, that's, that's not our job. And guess what? If it's about curriculum, policy, or our superintendent, it is my job. And that's where we have to keep pushing. And so there are things we can affect, but unfortunately, when it's two of seven, we can't even get four thumbs to bring something into a work session or to bring something into the dais on a formal board meeting unless we have that support. And so that's why these school board races are so, so, so very important for us to be able to not only just have balance right now, because there's no balance on some of these boards, but to be able to have maybe a slight majority where we can be nonpartisan, working together and pushing some things that we see for the benefit of our kids.
Good. All right. So one of the things, and I'll talk as a, as a parent, I have three children, we homeschooled them all leading up to about two years ago, when my youngest wanted to attend a school because he wanted to have the ability to do some other things, play basketball and do some other things. And so we did put him in a school. And so here, much of his two years, sophomore, junior year, he spent in and out of school due to COVID. He spent the vast majority of it masked. And so my question as a, and, and I'm going to take an answer from both of you, we'll start with Aaron. There are a lot of people concerned, especially now with the push for the Delta variant, and a lot of people concerned that we're going to see, and I can tell you as a parent, and my kid does not actually attend a public school, he does attend a, a private school, but I am very concerned about my kid wearing a mask all day. My, everyone in my household except for my daughter who ran and hid in her room when she realized that everyone was getting sick, everyone else in my household has had COVID. And so I don't think there's a great possibility that my now 17-year-old son could get COVID again. I could be wrong. Any of you scientists in the room, feel free to prove me wrong much later when this is over. I could be wrong. But even if he does, he's 17, he's healthy, he is amongst a, you know, there's, there's a half of one or third, you know, 10% of 1% of, of those people who are actually getting sick and dying. And so I don't want my child faced with those conditions again. I'm speaking as a parent. School boards are going to be faced with this, I am positive of it, this school year. I would love to know what your stance, what your position is, what it is you believe the school board, we'll start with Aaron, what you believe it is the school board can do to either push this forward or prevent it. Take it away.
So I am 100% opposed to masking children of any age. I, when I first, I have, I have friends who are on school boards across the county, and when I first heard that some of them were going in and starting to require masks, I have one friend who's on the D49 board, and when they came out and said they were masking everybody, the first thing I did was I called him and I yelled at him for 45 minutes. I said, listen, this is, this is not good for your students. Your job as an educator, as a board of education, is to educate students, full stop. That's the goal. And there's nothing about masks that will actually help create an environment to educate students. There is no academic benefit. In fact, everything goes the opposite way. Everything about masks hinders the learning environment, and especially when you start talking about the younger kids who weren't required to wear masks to begin with. And so my position is the way it's always been, is I'm going to continue to fight for it. In fact, right now, there are conversations going on because buses, school buses, are outside of the district's purview. There are federal mandates coming down for public transportation requiring masks, and that includes school buses for your local district. So if, parents, if you have children riding the school bus, at this moment, they will be required to wear masks on the school bus regardless of what the state's law, executive orders are. So just be aware of that. That being said, I'm already in communication with several board members in different districts to find ways around that. I was having conversations today of ways that we can get around that, ways that we can, we can get out of having that mandate for our kids on school buses. So I have fought for it, I am fighting for it, and I will continue to fight to make sure that we're not masking students at any level.
Yes. Can we work on Chassa, please? My, my son spent his entire season playing basketball in a mask. So that's including while sitting on the bench, so they could not remove it.
Not like when you're on the bench, when you're like at a restaurant where you can take your mask off? Okay. All right. We recently had a communication from our superintendent in District 11 about our return to learn update, very different. You got that email the same time I did. That was, that was wonderful as a, as a board member. I, I let people know about that. But that email was return to learn all in a nutshell. And yes, busing is federal, federally mandated, federal transportation, so you are required to wear a mask there at this moment. We, we are looking at that. But a conversation with our school board president, him and I, was that our board is very split, three, three, and one on mask mandates for this fall. And so we've already had probably about a dozen emails from parents across the district who are asking, well, because, because my son or my daughter can't who are asking, well, because, because my son or my daughter can't get the vaccine yet, I want masks to be required. And we've had about a dozen of those. I've received two emails that are saying, thank you for making masks optional, which is what our superintendent included at this time. So we stated CDC's recommendation said that we believe masks should be strongly encouraged, but they are not required. And to me, with the split of our board, that's a win in my book at this moment because of last year and the fight that it was with all of that, in and out of online, in-person, quarantining, all of that. But as of right now, we are masks strongly recommended, which means not required, wink, wink. And so read that as you, as you want. I'm still working on quarantining concerns. I know D-49 is trying to work a way to not have a whole class quarantine, but just have the six-student quarantine, which is what we've done forever. And so we're trying to find a path that way around the CDPHE and county health guidelines for that. But right now, if you are appreciative of the fact that masks are not required, your board needs to know that. Okay? You, we need to hear from you, because we hear from the angry 10, 20 parents that are mad that we're not putting face diapers on our kids. And, and that's all we hear from. So when the board of seven, that's already three, three, and one, is getting one side of this story in emails, who do you think has a better chance of that swing vote going their way when it comes down to Dr. Thomas going, I don't want to make this decision anymore as a superintendent, I want it to be a board vote? We need to hear from you. Your boards need to hear from you.
On that, one thing that I've, I've told several people that are wanting to go, I've talked to parents and community members that are wanting to go talk to the board. Just like Jason said, three, three, and one, that's a split decision. Okay? What they need is they need the conservative side to get out there and give them cover. They need to make the case for the fact that there are people who are on the conservative side that don't want masks on their students. We hear, like you said, hears all the time from the other side. We sit back in our houses and complain about it. We don't actually get out and do stuff. We need to get out in numbers, in force, and let them know that there are two sides to this story that is not all one-sided. So make sure that you're getting out and providing cover for your conservative board members, for your conservative superintendents that are wanting to make the right decision but are only hearing one side.
Yeah, I want to add, you know, because you're going to keep hearing the word conservative. And, and I've had a concern from the beginning that a virus has somehow become political. And therefore, it is split down some type of political line that imaginarily came up during a pandemic, whatever you want to call it. But with that being said, I think there is a large enough number of people on both sides of whatever political aisle we think exists, there are people on both sides that have a problem with masks. You know, I don't, I don't dislike them because I think they don't work, which I think they don't work. I don't think that's a
So does science.
I don't think that's a, right, says the science. But you know, I have a strong problem with my son running up and down a basketball court, breathing in his own CO2. Right? So I wasn't going to bring this up. And if you weren't here last night, I highly recommend you go back and view what, what Sharona said about, when she talked about the vaccine. We've not yet had a school district or a school that I'm aware of in El Paso County that is required vaccines for a return. But is there any conversation around the possibility?
Right now, in that same email, they were very clear on saying that we are not requiring vaccinations. Now, we had partnerships of mobile vaccine clinics in our, in our school sites, as at other districts in the city. However, we're, we're still holding that line.
All right. No kid should get the jab, but whatever. And again, go back and watch last night if you weren't here. So we're going to open it up for some Q and A. And so we're going to have, Sharona's going to handle this. You will not touch the mic. Don't touch the mic.
Do not take the mic.
And please ask a question.
Only questions.
Pointed question.
Pointed questions.
Pointed questions.
Direct questions.
Direct questions.
All right.
So come on, we want you to please line up really quick, and she will bring you up so that you can ask her a question. Please, if it's directed at one of the particular members of the panel, make sure that you make us aware of that. Thank you.
All right.
Hi, you were mentioning vaccinations. They are not required. Will the children who do not have them be othered or separated or made, made less than they should be?
I'll take that. Yeah, so that is a concern. We've had concerns of that from both sides, the vaccinated and the masked side, and then the non-vaccinated and the non-masked sides of just concerns about if my child's not wearing a mask, will he or she be bullied? If my child is wearing a mask, will he or she be bullied? But we, we are, I will be, I have it on my task list in our first work session, which is next week, around equity and also around return to learn, be asking those questions on personal health, your choice, your vaccination status. That should all be private. It should not be broadcast. It should not be asked them on staff members. Staff members should touch that, not touch that with a 10-foot pole with any student. So I will be very clear on that in our work session next week.
And so, yeah, it's fantastic. I can't speak for District 20. I know, I don't know what they're doing. I'm not on the board. I've been told certain things, but it's all public information that they won't be doing that. I have fought for a couple of people that were being required to wear masks because they weren't vaccinated over the summer session. And we were able to help put an end to that. I do know from our charter school, we are not doing anything. We are fighting very hard against vaccine mandates and mask mandates for unvaccinated.
Okay, so
Question only.
Question only. Okay. So would it be helpful to bring in testimony that threatens a school board, such as my cousin was killed in a sports thing by the decisions of a school and the school was then sued? And you, by doing the masks for your sports, are threatening their lives? And this could be the result to you? Would something like that be helpful or hurtful to present to a school board?
Hard to tell. Testimony is, is great. Evidence about that would support that would also be great. And that's what I ask people, if they're going to get engaged in, in sharing anything that, as Sloan mentioned this evening, having that evidence to go, I don't think, I, I know we should not have our children masks. And here's five studies, and then give them out to each of the board members that say this is peer-reviewed case study work from before the pandemic that shows that masks do not work in this setting. And that would be, I think, more helpful than a testimony would be, although a personal connection of somebody standing in front of the board is helpful at all times. Yeah.
Is it possible to tie in incentives and pay increases for teachers to bring up the grade reports?
To bring in, to bring up their grade reports? Wouldn't that be nice?
So, and I think what you're referring to is merit-based pay, which one school district, Harrison, does merit-based
So I taught there through all of that. The first year I taught was no merit-based pay. And then the second year I taught there was the first introduction to merit-based pay. And for people that are performance-driven like myself, you show me the bar or dingle the carrot, and I'll get it. And, and that, so that worked for me. But, you know, you mentioned merit-based pay or performance-based pay in a union district, and that's what they do. And then at the end of my teaching career, we weren't even allowed to give Fs. You weren't allowed to give an F anymore. So that whole stuff that Sloan mentioned was occurring back in 2018, 2019, when I was still teaching in our county.
Why are the report cards so partisan but racist? Who is all kids? Why isn't then black? And why Hispanic? And where are Pacific Islander, like my kids, or Asians? How long has it been like that for? This looks terrible.
So we were not responsible for putting together the report card. I know where the report card was generated from. There is a list of disaggregated data on the CDE website that actually breaks it down by different races, including Pacific Islander and others. I think there's four or five different races that are on there, including multiracial. And so I don't know why the report card was structured the way that it was. I don't necessarily agree with the way that it was structured as you're raising. But it's part of the disaggregated data that was provided by the CDE.
So it's also a report card question. Just looking at the differences in the overall ranking between District 20 and District 11, 10th versus 158th, is there ever any discussion between the districts to actually collaborate, work together, to glean from, obviously District 20 is doing something well in that area, and District 11 is very lacking? So does the, do the districts, you know, get together to collaborate to actually say, let's do what's best for the students here and take what you're doing well, and let's, let's embrace it in our district?
The problem is that in your scenario, people care about the kids' education. This is a competition. And if you, I mean, there was a lot of conversation recently, because District 20 surpassed District 11 for the first time for the number of students, which means we get more money than District 11 gets. And so they see it as a competition. They see it as a capitalist environment as far as we want to retain as many customers as we can. We don't want to lose them. We keep losing them to you. I don't care what you're doing. I'm going to, I'm just going to get mad at you for taking our students. And now we have less resources to work with. And unfortunately, our students suffer because of that.
To piggyback on that, we do have a regional superintendence group where our superintendents do get together. They, they did meet quite often through the COVID pandemic, because they were all El Paso County students that were, or all El Paso County superintendents that were in a roller coaster ride of updates from the state, updates from the county. And so we, they do meet as a, as a group of regional superintendents, and they do share some things in that regard. But to Aaron's point, it is, it is a competition of funding per pupil, unfortunately.
And also unfortunately, that group of superintendents is led by an individual who is not a conservative individual.
And I'm to assume that these meetings either happened via Zoom or mask mandatory. Yes? Yes?
I'll piggyback in.
Okay, I want to make sure they were staying safe. Thank you.
Hi, Aaron, this is a question about charter academy versus public school. So I have two kids in District 3. They're, as of last year, they were in James Madison Charter Academy. Their mother and I are deciding at this point, should we put them back in or go to the public school? Do you have any thoughts or can you speak into that?
Yeah, great question. And so I have actually had friends, so when I was starting the charter school, I had friends that said, I'm trying to pull my kid, I want him to go to your charter school. And I said, why do you want that? He said, well, we're friends. Of course I want to support you. And I said, well, I appreciate that. But pulling your student out of their social, I mean, you've got to think about what a school is for a student, right? Like, that's their social structure. That's, all of their friends are there, they get to know the teachers, they build relationships and friendships. And so to pull them out of that can be awfully traumatic. And so if, if they are succeeding academically, if they're growing, if they're learning what they need to learn, if you have good rapport with their teachers and the administration, if they are doing good things, keep them where they're at. If those are not the cases, then you need to look at other options. But it's really about whatever's going to be the best environment for your students. I know some charters are very strict. There are charter schools that I would not put my students in, because I know that, or at least my, a couple of my kids would not thrive in that structured of an environment where they would thrive in other environments. And so it's all about what's going to be best for your students. And a lot of people don't like this, but you know, sometimes you need to split them up. One school isn't necessarily going to fit them. So I hate to answer your question with it's kind of up to you, but it's really up to you as the parent, because you know your students, you know where they're going to thrive at.
That was a great answer.
Was a great answer.
How do we contact the board members and find out who they are?
You can go right to the school board website. Just type in School District 11 or D11.org, and there's a school board link right there at the top. You can read our bios of all the members of the school board. There's a button at the top where you can email the board entirely, or you can click on the names of the persons you want to email. So if you want to just email to me, you scroll down to me, picture my bio, click to email Director Jorgensen. But keep in mind, that is evidence mail, and it is core requested. And so if you, keep that in mind.
Director Jorgensen, can you tell me your three jobs that you had mentioned earlier?
Sure. Yeah, so we hire, fire, and manage our superintendent, review and approve curriculum, and then we create, edit, or revise policy. So curriculum, policy, superintendent. And, and the budget is part of that, I apologize. Thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, and I want to touch on some, Jason and I, I've known Jason for a number of years, and so we've had some off-the-record conversations. And one of the things that we've talked about is, is making available the curriculum to parents who are interested and concerned. And so Jason has told me multiple times, I will make any curriculum that, that is put forth in D-11 available to any parent that, that wants to see it. So hopefully we can see more of that from, from all school districts.
I think that'd be helpful, because, you know, we're, we're one person, and we have jobs, and we don't get paid to be on the board, although legislation was just passed to give us a paycheck for some reason. And so, yes, if you have, if you'd say, I want to know what 10th grade civics is learning, and we'd pull state standards, we'd pull supporting curriculum, and I can get that and I can give it to you. And then I'll, you, you read it, read it in your heart, heart's content, post a note, everything up, give me what you want as a constituent, and then I will go to bat for you as a board member. I just don't have the bandwidth to do that for every grade level, every subject.
So a lot of this is really new to me. Can you bring some clarity onto school board? Does, is a school board over a district? Okay, so then in the same district, like a charter academy and the public school, are they both under the same school board?
So the district board is considered an authorizer. And so charters need to come in and provide an application to the district board and say, we want to run a charter school. This is what we're going to do. And we basically create a contract with the district. And so the thing about charters is they have their own board. So I'm, I'm a founding board member for a charter school, I'm the board chair. And so we are essentially a microcosm of a district. We have, our one employee is our executive director or principal. We do the same things with policy and budget and curriculum approval at our school, just like they do at the district level. It's just on a smaller scale. But we operate independently of the, the district board. And so where the district board creates policies, we have the ability to go in, and number one, we can wave out of, of many things that come from the state level, but we can also go in and revise policies. So if there's certain policies at District 20, because we're a District 20 school. So if we have policies that we don't agree with from District 20, we can go in and we can create our own policy that we, that would govern our school outside of the realm of District 20.
For D-11, if it's a D-11 charter school, we have to share our funding with that charter school, including mill levy funds. And so we're in a different predicament when we're accepting applications for charters, where we have to decide if we want to give up some of that funding for that charter or just reject that application and let them find funding through the state charter methodology. So we can reject one, and they can still operate, just not within our D-11 budget and funding piece. So there's two ways to go about a charter.
So I am a District 11 employee, and I want to know, how can I support you as a school board member for District 11? I live in District 20, so I already know that we're going to sign your petition so that you can run in District 20. Absolutely. Praise God, we need more conservatives and people who know Jesus in the school board. So how can I, as a District 11 employee, I am a speech-language pathologist, how can I support you?
I, I think what we, what we need to have now is, as we saw the, the slide of engagement, right? Where we have people that are on a precipice, that are angry enough or agitated enough to want to take action. And so, you know, getting on Stacy's list for sure. I'm in communication, I love hearing from conservative teachers in our district, because I was one, and we had like two or three in a building. And, you know, you knew who your little posse was, because it was, it was a rough, rough world in the schools. So if we can, I'd love for us to build a conservative network of conservative staff in each building that then can say, here's, as we mentioned earlier in Sloan, here's that gender bread I saw as a speech pathologist in Mrs. Smith's classroom, and I asked where she got it from, and she got it from here. And I can go, thank you very much, and then I will act on that wholeheartedly, full force.
One, one advantage that Jason has as a director is he's not subject to the two-minute or three-minute public comment time slot that everybody else is. And so when you have stuff that's questionable or problematic, you can send it to him. you can send it to him. And then he can, he can discuss it at length. He's not, he's not sequestered to a certain time limit like you are. And so that's the problem that a lot of people run into is they want in and then their mic gets turned off. And like we saw in the video earlier, his mic doesn't get turned off much.
Not yet. I've been threatened. I've been threatened.
I have, sorry, one more question. And I don't know if you can answer it or help me. But because I'm a speech language pathologist, we have our Cs. And ASHA is the American Speech Hearing Association, which is an entirely leftist group. And it pushes all the leftist agenda. I really don't want to pay into it anymore. However, I'm not sure how to, if that would, you know, hurt me in my job. And I just want to be smart about it. But I also know that Jesus is my provider of all things. So I'm not looking to hold on to my job. I'm going to do what God says, just as it, in acts. Should we serve you or serve God? I'm going to serve God first. But I did, if anybody knows of any other organization that I could put money into, because I really do not like how my dollars are being spent by that organization.
Yeah, are you talking about the union or are you talking about the speech pathology?
I'm talking about the American Speech and Hearing Association, ASHA.
Okay.
Which is huge.
Yes, it's much like the NEA. So Stacy, behind you there, you can wave at her. There you go. She can get you in touch with PACE, which was mentioned last night. They should have a, a path for you to have some legal coverage there. Yep, for $16 a month. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
We've been talking about transparency and the insight we hope to gain from that transparency in many, many different areas. Yesterday, we talked about parents' rights. We have to ask for that insight, however. For example, we have to ask you for curriculum. Going a little further than just curriculum, what rights do parents have to do direct insight procurement, if you want to call it that, by, by observing in classrooms?
Well, COVID has made it a little interesting. But pre-COVID, you were welcome to check in as a visitor. You shadow your student for the whole day, every day, all year, if you want. You'd probably be pretty annoying to the building admin, but that's your purview and, and you're right as a parent. So COVID makes it a little stickier. And I, I, that'll be a thing, I'll write that down as a note on what it's going to look like for parents visiting buildings. But you are welcome to investigate anything, email your teachers, ask for lesson plans, review state standards that are available on CDE's website and be the squeaky wheel that gets however much grease you want.
In-person observer, is that a statewide policy? That is a statewide policy.
Nationwide, yeah, under FERBA.
That's all be annoying.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
So I just want to piggyback on that. Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's okay.
Questions only, Anne.
Questions only. I'm Mike Nazi, that's okay. So I am a retired teacher. And I remember when we did trainings, we did not want parents there. It was taboo. But I'm curious now, because I've had a lot of people ask me this. Can parents watch, stream, Zoom, whatever, teacher trainings?
I would, I would love that. I've asked for even the, you know, trainings around equity and what we're teaching our staff about equity with our new equity director. And I was told that that's not your job, Director Jorgensen. You're getting stuck in the weeds and, and just let us handle it. So why don't we organize some fire around that and bring some heat?
Cora requested.
Yeah, cora requests that Director of Equity and say, hey, what, I want anything with trainings, equity, staff, cora request, whatever emails are being sent. I'm pretty sure you'd have a really fun time with a highlighter in there.
Hi, I'm just curious, where are the books that are filtering into the libraries? The school libraries and even Pike's Peak Library District? I have been seeing some very questionable things just appear on the shelves that my kids pick up. And I'm, I have asked the employees and they seem to have no clue where these, who, who is it that decides where those, where that literature's coming from? How do they end up on the shelves? Does that go through, is that part of the curriculum?
It should be. But when I asked about books like I Am Jazz and, you know, other types of transgender books, I was told, I asked for them to be brought to me, ponied over through the district to our, our board office so I can review them. I was told, go ahead and just buy those on Amazon, Director Jorgensen, and you can review them that way. Because again, you're getting stuck in the weeds. So yes, there's a bunch of stuff happening. It's a general budget, a school based budget. They can buy some books and, and fund a library. It's a, it's a simple answer to your question.
Yeah, it's not considered curriculum. And a, a lot of times it's donations that come in.
Resources.
Yeah, resources and donations. And they're coming, there was an issue that I heard about a couple of years ago where there were books, there were, it was considered supplemental curriculum was aimed at kindergarteners through third grade, where the, you know, knight in shining armor comes up. There's a princess stuck in the tower and the, the knight in shining armor defeats a dragon or something and scores the, the winning, whatever it is, to get the princess out of the tower, comes down. And at the end of the book, the knight in shining armor takes off her helmet and the two live happily ever after. And so this is curriculum that's being written inside the state of Colorado, being donated and brought through schools as supplemental curriculum. So it bypasses the board's purview because it's considered supplemental. And they're sponsoring a lot of these events. In fact, in this one school district up north, most of the administrators were, were wearing jackets and T-shirts and stuff from the publishing company that had all been given to them. So it's a, it's a large fight. It's a large battle. It's a worthwhile battle, but it's outside of the purview of the board at this time.
Go, go find The Prince and The Prince. I believe that's one that's in a lot of school libraries.
Hi, I got an email this week from the school principal in District 11 at Martinez. And she says that, sorry, let me find it. We have been given new curriculum to support the whole child academically and socially, emotionally. So raising some red flags.